All right, welcome everyone Zoom world and in person. This is the special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission on Thursday, October 10th, 2024. We have basically one agenda item this evening, and that is the Plan of Conservation and Development. So, I want to take a roll call first. Dan Radman here, Krista Nielsen.
Here.
John Criss.
Here.
Chris Herring.
Here.
John Engel.
Here.
Paul Knag.
Here.
Alan Swirdlow.
Here.
Tom Benton.
Here.
Christina Larson.
She's not coming.
She's not coming. And then Eric Knowles.
Here.
Okay, Tom Benton and Eric Knowles, you're both seated for for tonight.
They're regular members.
That's right, I forgot, you're regular members now. Okay, so P O C D. Shall I start or you want to start?
You should start.
Start. So, Commissioner members, as you know, we've had a P O C D subcommittee in place for about a year. We've been working with S L R, our consultant, on the on the draft version of this, numerous public hearings, numerous in-town staff meetings, town council, and every other department in town government to try and get as much input as possible on where the next version of the P O C D should go in terms of addressing specific concerns of various stakeholders. We published the draft on July 17th. That went out to the public, the general public, and also went to the town council. They spent the better part of two months or so, a little more than two months, going through various meetings, we, myself, Commissioner Criss, who was the chairman of the P O C D subcommittee, and Sarah, attending all those meetings, answering questions, explaining why we did, what we did, how we did it. And I think we got to a place where we finally got some good constructive feedback from the town council. And that, in turn, ended up producing a set of amendments, substantial changes, and some non-substantial changes, minor stuff, all of which you guys have all been emailed. The list has gone out to everyone. When we had a deadline, a 65 deadline from that July 17th date, which was 10 days ago, Friday, the 23rd, 25th, something like that, 20th?
It was the 20th, yes.
It was the 20th. That was when town council needed to submit all their final comments, as well as any one in the public. There were some additional comments that came in from a couple other people in town, other red lines and observations on the draft. I personally went through one of those. Some of you might know Maria Weingarten in town. She's she's been spearheading a lot of the affordable housing, data gathering, and representation up at the state level, and she had some pretty good pretty good comments on the draft of the P O C D. Some of them just minor qualifications and corrections, and omit a sentence here or correct a sentence there. That is the document that you all saw as well. Sarah emailed it to you. It's 17 line items. I'll go through those later and explain why I think they are good changes, and we can discuss whether to keep them or not. In the end, we'd like to go through a short presentation. Sarah's gonna, PowerPoint, right? PowerPoint presentation that she'll give to everyone so you understand the evolution of the process over the last year, how we got to here. And then we'll have S L R speak to any questions you might have, and also explain what their role was and how they got to where they did with the draft. We'll take some public comment, if there's any public comment, and after that, we'll just go into deliberation and discuss potential changes, any concerns or questions you guys might have, and then vote on it. And we're gonna have two votes. One of them is for a vote for the incorporate subcommittee edits to the P O C D, and the other vote is to adopt the P O C D. I'd like to try and, we have a very structured agenda in front of us, I'd like to try and keep questions focused on on specific items that you have concern over, and try not be repetitive about any particular item and what those concerns are. We don't want to be here all night, want to try and wrap this up at a reasonable time tonight. So, with that said, Sarah?
So, I'm just gonna give those on the subcommittee a refresh of how we got to where we're at, and then through those commissioners that did not follow along as closely on the process, just kind of understand how we created the plan and how we got to where we are today. So, everyone can see my screen, just very briefly on background of how the slide is drawn up. The green circles are when we had public engagement opportunities, and then the black circles are just when we, behind the scenes, were working, like myself and S L R and the subcommittee, were working to actually, like, create portions of the plan. So, just very briefly, I'll go through all of this, and then I'll turn it over to S L R. But we started last September with a community survey that hopefully all of you took when it went out. We had 2,000 members of the public fill it out. I think our goal was 500, so we really blew it out of the water. And the purpose of that survey was to understand what people in the community perceive as being things that are really strong in New Canaan, and you know what things they perceive as needing us to focus on for the next 10 years. So, we use that to then go and identify our main themes for the P O C D and main issues for the P O C D, which eventually shaped, you know, our main theme chapters, that is, which is like the main meat of the plan. And then after we came up with those four common, or those four themes, we then had a community workshop in October of 2023. We had a pretty good turnout, I want to say 75 to 100 people came, and it was a really interactive workshop where everyone got to go to different stations with the themes that we had identified, and put down sticky notes about ideas of whether they agree with a theme or not. And we took that one step further, just because we knew one night probably wasn't enough for the community. And then in November, December, and January, we held theme nights that we called Community Dialogue, where the subcommittee just kind of held a public forum in this room where anyone could come on a specific theme night and talk about ideas they had or issues they had, which we, you know, took notes on to help formulate the rest of the plan. So then that led us to late winter, where we were working on creating our community vision statement, and actually coming up with the theme chapters, which then led to a community vision survey, where basically, I think it's chapter three of the plan, we have the community vision statement, and we turned that into an online survey, where members of the public got to, you know, redline this community vision statement, and also just let us know if we hit the mark or not on what the main themes would be. So, once we had consensus on that, we created all those goals, strategies, policies, and actions, which make up the main part of the P O C D. And that was very, you know, behind the scenes, just trying to take together all of our notes that we had from September all the way through, I think we were in March at this point, to really start to formulate most of the plan. And then we met with town staff in April and other departments to make sure all the actions that we were proposing made sense for, you know, what was going on in town hall, and what initiatives we had going on. And then we had a workshop in May and a survey following that workshop to make sure that our goals, strategies, actions, and policies all made sense for the town. And, you know, I think that went really well. We, you know, took feedback, we got to redline these actions, and any feedback we got from the public, we were able to weigh and determine if we wanted to include in the plan or not, and if it made sense. And so that led to the drafting of the full P O C D document in late spring, early summer. And then, as Dan said earlier, July 17 of this year, we released the full draft for the 65-day public comment period, where the public, you know, got to go through the plan very in-depthly. We received very good feedback, constructive, and, you know, consensus for it, and town council provided us with the documents, and, you know, we had meetings with them, and we, the subcommittee, you know, went through all of that, and last, two Wednesdays ago, had the meeting to determine what they did and didn't want to include based on the public comment period and town council's comments, and the documents that I sent to you all after that subcommittee meeting were the result of that. And so that gets us to tonight, which is to adopt the P O C D. So, that's a very fast recap of what's gone on in the last year. And if there are no questions, I'll turn it over to S L R for their intro.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. For the record, my name is Robert Collins, and I am a professional planner and project manager with S L R, and I was the project manager to lead this effort. Also joined virtually by my colleague, Julia Fiore, who is also here to be able to answer any questions that you may have. I'd like to begin by just thanking the town for allowing us to have this opportunity to collaboratively work with you, specifically town staff, as well as the subcommittee, and the Planning and Zoning Commission as a whole, as well as the town residents. It has been a very rewarding experience, and we are very grateful to have been given the opportunity and to work with you throughout the process. As I mentioned, our role, it is a very collaborative effort to develop a P O C D, collaborating with all of those entities that I just mentioned. But our role was primarily to guide and assist and coordinate, and then actually produce the final document. So throughout that process, as Sarah kind of outlined in a very detailed way, she kind of indicated all the different collaboration efforts that we had, either with town staff, which includes not only Sarah and her immediate staff, but also other town departments, which were crucial to understanding various actions and strategies, but also the subcommittee and the residents as a whole. Also, I just wanted to, I think, wanted to walk through the plan a little bit, just to kind of explain what the P O C D final document, how it's laid out, just for the general public. It does include nine sections or chapters, and it also includes three appendices. And the first chapter is just an introduction, kind of lays the groundwork for why a P O C D is required and what the regulations are. Section two was New Canaan Today, which is tied to the Community Profile and Existing Conditions Report. It's basically a summary of that document, and that document is attached as appendix A. I was gonna pause just for a moment and let Julia speak just briefly, just about, because New Canaan Today includes a lot of data and analysis that kind of led to the rest of the plan. She's just gonna mention a quick overview of the data and how it was analyzed and the sources.
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Robert. Yeah, so, as Robert mentioned, New Canaan Today is a summary of, that really condenses a large volume of research, which is, you can find the results of those in the appendix, the existing conditions, the community profile, and the resiliency and sustainability review. That's over 100 pages, so there's a lot of information in there, and it covers a very, very wide range of topics. And from that, that information was shared with the public and the subcommittee very early in the process. That was really our first step in this process, was gathering all that data. And then we worked together to answer your questions, to analyze the data, to see how we could answer some of your questions with more data. And then we worked together to develop this narrative, which draws the most significant and salient conclusions that we found from that really amount of data gathering and research that we did. And then just to give you some background on some of the sources, so this was, we developed this early on in the process, so late 2023, early 2024, and we used a mix of sources that are all, you know, very reliable, and the best sources available to us, such as the United States Census, the American Community Survey, state sources such as the Department of Economic and Community Development, Department of Transportation. And then we also, you know, we did our Q A, Q C on all of that data through our mapping and our analysis to ensure that that was, it was all correct, and we were interpreting it correctly, and making conclusions based on, you know, correct and significant data. And we also supplemented with a lot of local information that Sarah provided to us, that different departments provided to us, in order to sort of fact-check the information that was in these, you know, larger public sources of information. So, we think it's an extremely comprehensive analysis, and of course, we can't cover everything in that chapter too, but if at any point you have any questions, or in the future you need to look at something, there's still that very, the full analysis that would be in the appendix. And overall, the goal for this process was to sort of gain, everyone to gain an understanding of where you are today, to have information to inform some of your decision-making. Of course, things change, can change very rapidly, and you'll need to, you'll be able to reference this, but things will change, but we think we've established a very good foundation from which to, from which we developed this plan, and then from which that you can make future decisions. So, thank you.
Great, thank you, Julia. And also, I know that that was reviewed with the subcommittee in great detail, and we really appreciate their insight that they gave during that that review period. The rest of the plan rounds out with chapter three is the vision and community themes chapter, which Sarah referenced as far as when they were developed early on in the process. Chapters four, five, six, and seven are really the kind of the main substance of the document, and these are the four theme areas that were identified by the community vision. And they include preserve New Canaan's welcoming small-town identity, which is the first theme, and that's actually chapter four. Chapter five, which is the next theme area, was promote creative and balanced development. Chapter six, the third theme area, was embrace sustainability and resilience. And then the chapter seven, which was the fourth theme area, was enhance community infrastructure and facilities. Each one of those chapters not only takes some of the analysis from New Canaan Today or other information that we receive from community input or from the surveys, and gives some analysis to, you know, why those goals and theme areas were developed, but each each theme area has a series of goals, strategies, actions, and then policy statements, which are then used in appendix C, which is the implementation plan, which kind of takes each one of those action steps and puts responsible entities as well as timeframes, so that during the next 10 years, the town, or specifically the Planning and Zoning Commission, can check in, maybe on a yearly basis, as we've recommended, to see how the, those types of things are being taken care of, or what priorities have changed. Chapter eight is the Future Land Use Plan, which is the unique plan that comes out of the P O C D, and it kind of sets the future land uses for the town, which does tie very closely to existing zoning, but it does identify some potential adjustments that can be vetted in the future with some more in-depth studies. And then rounding out the plan is the chapter nine, which is the consistency with state and regional plans. This is a requirement of the state, and this shows that your plan is, while it is unique to New Canaan and your needs and desires, it does have consistency with state goals from the state plan, as well as the regional plan. That's my, that concludes my summary of the plan, and we welcome any questions or comments that you may have. Thank you.
Any questions at this point? Nope. After we hear public comment, and we go into deliberation, will we still be able to ask Robert questions?
Yeah, this isn't like an application or anything like that.
I'm just making sure.
You can ask whoever you want, any questions when we talk.
That's fine. Thank you, Robert. Okay, so at this point, we would open it up to any public comments or public input. If anyone in the room has any questions or comments on what's being proposed, please come up to the table or podium, whatever you choose.
Just make sure that you turn the mic on.
Just press the button in the front there.
Okay. So, I'm Teresa Pincasque, I live at 161 Old Studio Road, I have prepared comments.
Sure. You can just speak up a little bit more.
Yeah, bring the mic closer.
As a resident of Old Stanford Road Route 106, who could be impacted by an installation of a sidewalk from Bristow Bird Sanctuary to Gower Road, I have been vocal about my concerns for the safety, particularly around the sharp curve, as well as the maintenance cost and liability, should the burden of snow ice removal be pushed on homeowner abutting a town sidewalk. The Bylaws and Ordnance Committee voted against an ordinance change this summer. The town had made assurances at the time of the Main Street sidewalk installation to gather support and pass a referendum. Interest in sidewalk expansion was reflected in the 2014 P O C D. The town remains responsible for snow ice removal and liability, while admitting town had failed to clear all the existing sidewalks they were responsible to maintain by ordinance. The apparent insufficient funds to maintain the sidewalks and a loss of support for new sidewalk installation without proper funding should not be dismissed. Having voiced concerns at the town council bylaw and ordinance committee meetings on June 5th, July 1st, and July 15th, 2024, it is my position that safety, support, and funding should be addressed to properly update the P O C D. The 2024 P O C D should accurately reflect the current environment, as feedback for the draft should have been gathered through this sidewalk discussion and vote this summer. I believe, in contrast, the inclusion of an action to develop and adopt a comprehensive sidewalk extension plan in the 2024 P O C D may act as an endorsement of sidewalk expansion by the Planning and Zoning Committee, as it is assumed a plan should be adopted. The 2018 New Canaan Resident Path Petition for Residents and Children, and the Road Safety Project, Old Stanford Corridor, Park Street, Farm Road petition, created and shared with town bodies by Chris Herring, listing residents' names and addresses in support, without signatures, including mine, without my knowledge or consent, included a conceptual sidewalk map, described as an excerpt from the 2014 N C Plan of Conservation. This map identified desirable sidewalk links. I am opposed to the inclusion of a map in the 2024 P O C D designating Old Stanford Road Route 106 between Bristow and Gower Road as a proposed or desirable sidewalk extension. As I stated during public comments at the town council public hearing on September 4th, 2024, I believe the placement of a member on P and Z's P O C D subcommittee and the member's personal interest in the P O C D's goals, strategies, policies, and actions is relevant, especially since P and Z can disregard the recommendations of town council with the vote. I support the town council's recommendation, motion number four, to remove specific actions that expand the number of and/or feet, meters, miles of sidewalks by removing the words and adopt and expansion, page 52, Actions A, under Strategy 133. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Joby Gray, here in town on Ono. First, thank you all for giving up so much of your time. Planning and Zoning Committee is so incredibly important in this town. I plead total ignorance to ever having gotten any notice about open hearings about this before, so I just wanted to ask you whether each one of us in town will be either told how to read it online, or will it be in a newspaper, or will it be sent to us? Because I'm terrible, I think we're all, if we own land, terribly interested in what we are doing and what the state would like us to do. And I'm embarrassed to say that I've missed it and was so happy to come here tonight. So, please, someone let me know how I may get a copy when it's when it's fine.
Yeah, so, right now, it is, the draft is posted on the town's website, and you can reach out to the Planning and Zoning Office, and we can, when the full draft is finalized, there will be a paper copy in our office, and it will also be posted online, and we can.
And will you also have it in the newspaper or something?
It's a large document, it's over 100 pages.
No, just a notification that we can come to the Planning and Zoning Office.
So, we likely won't advertise it in the newspaper, but it will just, it will be available, the plan is to have the the plan adopted on an effective date of November 1, so November 1, you should either be able to access it online or come to the Planning and Zoning Office, and we'll have a paper copy.
I just, there may be other people like myself that don't check the town schedule online.
We can look into noticing it in the newspaper as well.
That would be wonderful.
Yeah.
Thank you, thanks, everybody.
I know some of the newspapers in town know the Sentinel's been very diligent in covering it, and I would assume that they may be interested in mentioning that the, whatever actions we take tonight, and sharing that. We'll also alert First Select Mindiana Carlson, who has a monthly newsletter, this is something I think she would want to publicize. Obviously, it's her decision, not ours, but I would assume that would occur too, which is very widely distributed, so we're doing our best to get the word out as.
I'm sure you are. I'm embarrassed that I haven't read it. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Anybody else, public comment? Anybody in Zoom land, public comment? Did we lose Mr. Engel?
No, he just shut off this.
Okay.
Alan Swirdlow.
Okay. So, no further public comment. Do you want to go through the substantial and non-substantial items first, or?
So, I mean, I think it's really up to the commission if they feel the need to go through them or not, since they were thoroughly vetted at the subcommittee meeting, so I don't know if.
Has everyone had a chance to see what Sarah sent around on those particular edits?
Specifically, the subcommittee edits, I assume, not your edits, Dan?
I understand it. Dan, you have, Maria Weingarten gave you some comments that led to you making certain recommendations, so I'm assuming that that was not presented to the subcommittee, is that right?
The, the, her complete set of comments was presented to the subcommittee.
Were submitted to the subcommittee.
Were submitted.
So, are you, in making these recommendations, are you, were those suggestions made and rejected by the subcommittee?
No, they were not. They were made after our subcommittee meetings, again, that 65-day deadline of whatever it was, 10 or 12 days ago, that passed, and we had not had a subcommittee meeting since then, so these were kind of last-minute comments that were submitted alongside the town council comments.
So, I think it might be useful if you just quickly summarize what you propose.
We're starting with the subcommittee edits specifically, I think that's what you were getting at, right? We're not, we're not starting with Dan's edits, we're starting with the subcommittee edits, right? Or no, okay. I don't care.
I'll start with mine. How about that? I'll go through mine. And again, there was, this is my, my sort of filtering of the comments that came through, picking the ones that I felt were most applicable, most relevant, and most impactful in terms of a potential change to the P O C D, as how it reads, and how it's presented, and how it's interpreted by everyone for the next 10 years. I'll go through these pretty quickly, refrain from comments until I get through them, there's 17 items, and then at the end, if there are specific ones, we can go back to them and discuss them as a committee and a commission, and choose to adopt or not adopt them, or whatever you, whatever you propose. Page 11, under race and ethnicity, so there, if you're in the P O C D, that particular page.
Can we share my screen?
Sure.
Do you want me to share the screen of the plan or of your comments?
No, of the P O C D. So, that particular page 11 goes into the race and ethnicity demographic breakdown in the town. There's a full paragraph talking about the percentages of different population groups in town, what they represent, how they've grown or shrunk, et cetera. And what I'm suggesting is the final sentence, which is in here, compared to Fairfield County as a whole, the town remains less racially diverse. uh, compared to Fairfield County as a whole, the town remains less racially diverse, et cetera. I'm basically saying it's duplicative. We don't need to add that in there. Um, in my opinion, I think that just adds additional ammunition for potential applicants, let's, let's call them predatory, predatory, uh, developers and attorneys who like to come before us and claim certain things of this town and, and trying to get things passed. Um, all the data is in the paragraph above it. I'm just suggesting getting rid of that sentence at the end. Page twelve, education and income. Uh, again, uh, there is, um, the, uh, under education income where it states, uh, New Canaan significantly higher household, et cetera. Um, I'm just suggesting removing the last portion of that statement, which is, which has limited those who can afford to live in the community. I don't think we need to highlight that as well. Again, I'm looking forward at to, at the potential applications that are coming before us and the arguments that are going to be made. I think we are clear in stating what, um, what New Canaan's breakdown is in terms of household incomes and how it correlates to schools and, and real estate prices, et cetera. I don't think we need to highlight that. Uh, page fourteen, um, this was just a comment to S L R, um, questioning on the housing diversity numbers. Um, where are those, you may have answered this in one of our Subcommittee meetings and I just don't recall what the response was, but where those percentages and numbers came from. Um, and you can pick that up at the end and just address that. Uh, page fifteen, household composition and housing size. Um, we should probably add something in there addressing the potential for work from home. We talk about, um, uh, housing size, number of, a number of, um, bedrooms, uh, in the housing and what the demographic is of the single family residences, but there's a component that's changed since COVID of a lot of people working from homes, myself being one of them. Uh, and I think that plays an impact into people maintaining a certain size of housing in town in order to accommodate that rather than downsizing to a single or two-bedroom apartment, for example.
Mr. Chairman, with permission, uh, I'd draft, take the liberty of drafting a sentence. If I might put it read in the record now?
Shoot.
Thank you. Uh, post-COVID, there has been a significant increase of town residents working from home on a partial or full-time basis. This is partly a reflection of the types of jobs many town residents have. This is also driving the need for larger homes with properly equipped home offices, some of which are repurposed bedrooms. I think this captures the-
Captures the-
-concept you suggested, Mr. Chairman.
You want, you don't, you don't want us to continue to comment on this now, though?
Yeah, let's, let's hold on till the end.
That's my suggestion on addressing the open letter, open, uh, sentence, please.
Um, page sixteen, under home values and rental costs. Uh, the lack of housing value below five hundred thousand signit- suggests a significant barrier for individuals wishing to move into or downsize within the community. Again, I don't think we need to highlight that, that page, uh, page sixteen. I mean, we get into an entire paragraph above that talking about, um, the percentages of housing that are above a million, below a million, between half a million and one million, et cetera. We've already identified that. I don't think this last sentence is necessary. Um, and again, on page sixteen, in twenty twenty-one, ninety-nine percent of rental units, the cost two thousand dollars or more. Uh, in twenty twenty-one, ninety-nine, ninety point nine percent of rental units cost two thousand or more. Um, um, my question was where that particular data came from? Was that MLS data? It's a question to S L R. Or did we data mine that somewhere from town records? Because, um, if we're getting it from MLS, um, most people that are renting apartments in town, they're not going through MLS to rent. Uh, those are usually the higher priced, uh, apartments. Uh, lower priced apartments, which there are naturally occurring lower priced apartments within this town and a good amount of them, those are never reported to MLS. So I want to be careful of what we're representing in terms of the price points and where the data is coming from. Uh, page seventeen, under affordable, uh, housing affordability. Uh, modify the second paragraph to the following: Percentage of households in New Canaan are considered low income um, has increased since two thousand thirteen, et cetera, et cetera. I'm suggesting adding a sentence in the third paragraph to, to the following: All of the units that the New Canaan Housing Authority has constructed will remain affordable housing in perpetuity and will not be expiring in forty years like the typical eight thirty G state mandated projects. I think we need to draw a distinction there because New Canaan's gone above and beyond what some of the other towns are doing in terms of building affordable housing rather than just being subjected to eight thirty G applications. Um, page eighteen, under employment. Um, slightly modify that re- uh, uh, statement, um, adding, but this has been, um, employment in New Canaan is concentrated education, healthcare, socialists, uh, social assistance and retail. Uh, most people who work in New Canaan live elsewhere, but most New Canaan residents work outside of New Canaan. Again, to my point earlier, adding the sentence. But this has been changing since the COVID pandemic, where an increasing number of New Canaan residents now work from home or work in town in satellite offices. Again, just adding a little more clarity to the demographic of how, you know, who's, who's living and who's working in town. Page nineteen, under live work in New Canaan. Uh, modify the first sentence according to the P O C D. New Canaan's downtown area is considered a potential growth area for the region to the existing land use, uh, due to the existing land use patterns and employment. That is different than jumping to nineteen, sorry. Um-
I have it on the screen.
Okay. Um, yeah, o- other than, um, where it currently says, under, according to regional P O C D, New Canaan's downtown, downtown and the area around South Avenue are considered potential, potential growth areas. I don't think in the P O C D we should be identifying a specific location for potential growth like South Avenue and, and putting a bullseye on that. I'd rather, I think it should be a little more general and just leaving it as the general downtown area. Um, it, it, it constricts us in one, it could constrict us in one argument. It could help us in another, but by removing that sentence, it leaves us more flexibility in, in what to consider as potential development areas in the town. Um, fiscal health. New Canaan's municipal, um, fiscal indicators. Sorry?
This is the same page?
Same page, yeah, on the right side. Up there, yep. Uh, fiscal indicators were reviewed to understand the town's financial health in relation to other communities and the state, not just the state. Um, this is sort of a general theme. I put a footnote at the beginning of just making sure that we're not just referencing state data, um, which I know we're required to by state mandate to a certain degree, but, um, certain language, I think we have to include the fact that we're comparing ourselves to other communities in the general area and not just the state numbers. Again, that just touches here, trying to modify that so we're not just adding state in there everywhere. Um, on the fiscal health, um, this is a question to, um, Mar- Robert and S L R. If we could include some sort of regional data and metrics that compare us to other similar towns in the area like Greenwich, Darien, Bolton, Westport, et cetera. We refer to, uh, nearby benchmark communities in other sections of the P O C D. I don't see why we shouldn't refer to nearby benchmark communities in this section as well.
So we, we want to prove this tonight. Uh, how are we going to formulate that?
We can talk about it at the end.
Okay.
I would look for, um, Mark and his team to also provide guidance on that.
I mean, uh, if, if that's getting brought up now, um, we, we did, the Subcommittee did discuss this when the first draft came out and that data was not readily available and it, it was specifically chosen that we couldn't compare to other municipalities because it was just like in, in, with the data that we had available, it was like comparing apples to oranges and it just-
That's fine.
So that, that one is going to be very challenging, if not impossible, to accommodate at this time.
That's fine.
I think, I think-
DRGs? Yep. That's, that's it.
Okay.
Um, page twenty-nine, public transportation, add the following to the first sentence. Um, just clarifying that the, the branch line that we're on, it's a commuter line with a limited frequency of service. Um, you know, we just want to be accurate in the description of the availability of rail service in this town. Um, so we're not, um, painting a picture that, you know, there's, there's this high frequency of rail service that would foster a different level of development in the town. Um, page forty, uh, under sustainability, which I spelled incorrectly, um, um, you mentioned Walter Stewart's Market in the sustainability portion.
If you go on their website, they have all these sustainability initiatives planned at New Canaan, recognizes them as a partner for a sustainability initiative, so it was not an error.
I can vouch for that, Mr. Chairman. Composting and so forth. I can vouch for that.
Okay. Um, page forty-seven, embrace New Canaan small-town identity. Um, I would just like to, I know we focused on talking about the evolution of our zoning guidelines and, um, um, how we got to our current one, two, and four acre zoning. I, I think we should add the line I haven't read here, um, identifying the fact that as well as further defining denser portions of town in the half acre, third acre, A B, multifamily and apartment zones. So I don't want to make it sound like all of our zoning, uh, the evolution of our zoning guidelines was focused around creating these larger lots. I want to note that there's also been an evolution of the downtown denser area zoning. Um, page fifty-two, under policies, um, in, in the Institute of Transportation and Development. Just change it from promote to consider elements of, or something like that.
The Subcommittee addressed that, um, so I don't know if you want to defer to the Subcommittee's language, um, because again, you all did vote and discuss that one as well.
Promote.
No, you changed it. I, I don't have it exactly on what it was, but you changed it.
Yep, it's already done. So it's already done. Good. Yep.
Can I make sure, can I just go back to the previous edit? I just want to make sure I'm understanding the intent.
Yep.
So with page forty-seven, embrace New Canaan's small-town identity. When you say modify paragraph to read, um, is the red ink what you suggest changing or, or?
Adding, suggest adding.
Okay, but the, the remainder of the text is?
Is, is as is. The only thing I changed is took out the word remarkably. You can see the strike through.
Okay, that's what I wa- I wasn't sure.
And the strike through after, with these amendments, New Canaan reduced allowable residential density townwide.
Right. Okay, I just want to make sure when you said, I wasn't sure if there were other edits in the body, so.
Just the red and the strike through.
Thank you.
Um, page sixteen, goal two point two. Uh, again, just adding the sentence in red, uh, where we talk about, um, affordable housing units. Uh, New Canaan continues to be focused on providing quality, permanently affordable housing units. This is in contrast to the eight, state eight thirty G projects, which are only affordable for a limited amount of forty years. Again, just trying to highlight the distinction between the efforts of what New Canaan's been doing compared to the state mandates. Page sixty-one, um, consider fo- establishing a limited and focused overlay district. Um, just, again, giving us uh, looking to establish one, but lending clarity to the fact that we're not going to be, you know, doing this huge town-wide overlay district that's going to be transit oriented. It's going to be focused around the central downtown area. However, however we go to define that at a later date, but that is, it just gives us a little bit of wiggle room. Uh, page eighty-one, enhance tran- alternate transportation and services. Um, vision zero network. Um, you know, in going through their stuff, why, why do we necessarily have to reference them when we can just state what our goals are?
I mean, I think that was, I don't recall if it was suggested by S L R or not, but I mean, it's just generally speaking, a national initiative to decrease the amount of traffic-related deaths, so it, we just didn't think it.
I understand, but I don't think we need to-
Is it considered a best practice? Basically, in terms of like, this is what communities are striving for?
Yes.
But then, by doing that, what if their, their goals and outlooks change in five years in terms of what they're promoting?
This is an advisory document and if we no longer agree with the goals, you remove it from the plan or you no longer apply to that, but I mean, yeah, so.
That's fine.
If I may, I mean, I would agree with your sentiment here that, um, perhaps we're more agnostic.
Yeah.
And, you know, if there's even a better one out there, let's take that and simply say promote strategies in public and private roadway projects to ensure safe mobility within the community and gets the point across.
Saying, like, ignore the Webster dictionary and, and maybe define your own dictionary. Like, I just think that one of the things that we try to do is find experts and data to drive our decision-making. So I think encouraging the idea of-
Again, I would rather be more agnostic and if we want to, uh, if the-
When you say agnostic, do you mean ignoring experts or do you mean?
I mean, uh, let's use- A, uh, portfolio or spectrum of experts, these and maybe others that really are just, haven't even been announced yet or, uh, formed yet. Again, being a little more flexible as opposed to saying there's only one track.
Would you be more comfortable in saying promote? You know, standards, you know, expert standards like Vision Zero or alternatives or other expert alternatives?
Yeah, that would be better.
Then, not, not to overcomplicate things, but we also reference, you know, initiatives like complete streets and whatnot, so if, if you're now taking this stance against this one related to pedestrian safety, why, like, why are you singling out this one and not all of them? It just, it doesn't seem consistent with what else is done in the plan.
I guess I'm, it's more of a global statement, uh, you know. Rather than subscribing to their specific guidelines, we can reference them, but to, um, to your point, we can, we can also put a an additional few words in there to say, uh, in- include other expert references or other expert or their, you know, industry standards for that particular aspect.
You changed the word promote in that first part. Is it, because is it policy one that you have the problem with? That it's the promote the Vision Zero strategy? If you change the word promote to something more agnostic with that, solve the issue instead of overcomplicating?
Yeah, that would.
I, I do think one thing, looking at this, I think we were trying to highlight things that would get grant money. So I think, um, I think what we were trying to suggest is things that would, would check the box for grant money. So you can see in the actions, number one, safe streets would check the box for the town getting more money.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's true.
Because it's, you know, these grants are getting more and more competitive and it's easy way to knock yourself off the list if you don't, if you're not explicit about your intentions, that-
Yeah.
If ten other towns reference this, okay, the one that doesn't, we're not, we're going to move on to the next.
Makes sense.
Can we go through and comment on?
Was there one other?
I have one, I have just one more, so. Um, multifamily residential, um, this is page eighty-six. Uh, multifamily residential, so, uh, adding a sentence, um, where New Canaan will prioritize an affordable housing stock that offers more diverse housing types than those found in low and high-density single-family residences. This zone, along with the apartment zone, is where most of the naturally occurring affordable housing stock currently exists. Just, again, highlighting the fact that we do already have some affordable housing, um, that is, that is naturally occurring in the town.
So I would just comment on that language specifically. I, I don't have an opinion about whether you want to add a sentence about highlighting that the naturally occurring affordable housing is here, but it just, I think it would be incorrect to say that this is a zone because this is the future land use plan, so it's more just this land use and calling out the apartment zone. Um, I don't know if it really makes sense because the apartment zone is included in this future land use, so I think, you know, it, the commission needs to decide if they want to include this language, but I just wanted to put out there that I do think it needs to be rewarded because saying zone is misleading because the whole purpose of this is that it's not about zones, it's about land use.
It's about, yeah, got it. Okay, that's fair.
What were you trying, I mean, what were you trying to achieve there? Because I, I, I understand, I think where you're going.
I, I, well, we have a multifamily residential zone as a zone.
Okay, yeah.
So I was conflating specifically that zone, but I, I get where Sarah is going with it. Said we were trying to address multifamily residential as a more umbrella statement.
The multifamily already is in town and
Yep.
will be in the future, so.
So that's, but I guess um, do we do that, right? Where does it say multifamily residential um, housing stock?
So this is the.
Specifically say that it's in town.
No, so this is the information about each land use category that's on the map on the next page. So this is the text describing the multifamily residential land use that is on that next map.
Okay.
And it does in that first paragraph say that the zones are near downtown in the New Canaan.
Yeah, you're right, new paragraph above it.
Mr. Chairman, what about, instead of saying this zone along with the apartment zone, saying the downtown areas where it's a generic.
No, cause I, I think our whole purpose is that the downtown is mixed use and like, yes, this is downtown, but I think then we're getting too close to talking about the TOD area and.
I see your point, yeah. Okay, I can, I'm fine with not doing that one. Does anyone have any specific comments on any of the items I read?
Uh, yeah, I have a, a few.
Sure.
That'll go through. So we'll start with the first one on page eleven. I, I kind of disagree with the omission, um, because it's really just making a conclusion based on information that's already there. I don't think it's really misleading. I think it's actually fact. Um, and I don't see the, the rationale to, to take it out if it's just a conclusion based on facts.
Uh, again, my rationale is the paragraph above it stated clearly what the breakdown in the percentages were. And I'm, I'm trying to take that sentence out to eliminate the potential for which we've already been through with a particular applicant. Attorney standing in front of us and calling our town racist because of our demographics.
Yeah, I don't think that's, I, I, I mean, this is, we're not, we're saying the factual basis that is racially distributed as it is. Like it's, you know, it's a conclusion based on fact. I don't see the need for the omission.
When there's, when there's a disagreement like this, do you, is it easier if you all just take a vote if you want to accept the change or not? You know, someone could state their opinion, you know, if they disagree with it, and then maybe just do a vote to keep discussion short unless you, you feel the need to discuss further, but.
Great. I'll just, I'll just add one more thing to what Eric said about this, and this kind of applies to all of the comments, which is the first two and a half pages that are in the existing condition section. I think that it's important to remember that this section lays the groundwork for where we are today so that we can clearly see what issues the town has to address and where we want to go in the future. And that requires you to have context. And so sometimes the context is relational in terms of how we compare it to other communities. Sometimes that context is temporal in terms of where we were in the past and where we are in the present. But I think this comment in particular and some of the others are trying to kind of take the context away. And I think that when you take the context away, you take the meaning away. And if there's no meaning, then how do you actually analyze this and know where, what the problems are and where you want to go? And that's just a generic comment for a lot of these. I think that the context is important.
Fair enough. I, uh, I, I, I support Dan's uh proposals. Uh, I don't think that, uh, I, I don't think it helps us to engage in self criticism uh of the type that uh are fo- are focused on these, in, on in these changes. Uh, and uh, you know, we're, the fact is we're under attack. In a major way. Uh, and our, and there are those who want to substantially change our town for their personal profit. Uh, and I think we need to do everything we can not to give them ammunition. So I, I support uh what Dan's proposing.
And in terms of context, I, I agree with you, but on many of these, we've already provided the context in the sentence prior or the paragraph prior, so we're, we're just reiterating what's already been stated. I don't think we need to.
But like in some cases, right here, you're saying you don't want us to compare our demographics to overall Fairfield County. And then other places you're saying you do want to compare the data to Greenwich, Darien, Wilton, Westport. So it's like you're cherry picking when and where it's appropriate to have context and when it's not. And basically it's about public relations and what we think looks flattering and what we think doesn't. But the reality, the reality still exists, whether we say it in this plan or not. We are not the most diverse town. And it doesn't take us writing that in this document for other, everyone else to know it. It's in the census data. It's there.
Mm-hmm.
So I wouldn't shy away from speaking the truth.
Yeah, I recommend just, you know, voting, you know, for or against including it in the plan.
Can I make one comment? I, I think I, the one thing I do think is that the last sentence is which has limited those who can afford in the town like I, I would say like has, has limited the income levels, you know, um, uh, cause I feel like those could be potentially perceived as like a racial those, um. Because it basically it's saying that strictly high prices have, have, have limited those, but I think it's like, you know, there's income level, you know, the diversity of income levels that can, that can live in town.
And also demographically, not, not necessarily um racial, but age as well, right? It limits, right, those does, I don't think is, I think, I think I would strike that as well. Um, actually, I take it back. I would, I would put which has limited those who can afford to live in the community because not only is it a maybe it's a, a racial component, but it's an age component.
We have an aging population, so I'm trying to reconcile your comment with that.
You have a younger population that needs to move in to take so many to buy these houses at some point, right? So.
And an older population wants to stay.
Wants to stay.
Wants to stay. So there's, there's some turnover that you know, has to, has to naturally happen.
But it has nothing to do with race or age. It has to do with income levels and that's, that, that's where I was trying to focus on it. In that like, which has instead of limited those who can afford to live in the town, I would say limited which has limited the income, you know, income, income scale diversity. I don't know, uh, income, the variety of income levels that can afford to live in town. That's where I was going, but maybe I'm over complicating it.
Did we want to vote on page eleven before we go to page twelve or?
Yeah, I, I mean, I was recommending just trying to get through the list before jumping around.
Okay, so let's, let's go, let's, can we just do it as a show of hands? Or go through the roll?
I would probably do the roll just because it's obviously not unanimous and just is it yay, like is it yay to keep it or like? How are you voting? Yeah, you're a yay.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know if people are opposing all of them or just.
So we're starting with page eleven.
So the first item, page eleven, under race and race and ethnicity. So um, yay if you're for it, nay or yes or no. So yes, if you're for it, no, if you're against it. Um, for this modification, and I'll just go through the vote call. Uh, Dan Radman, I vote yes. Kristin Nielsen?
No.
John Cris?
Yes.
Chris Herring?
Uh, no on that one.
Um, John Engel?
Yes.
Uh, Paul Nag, yes. Alan Swirlo?
Well, I'm going to abstain only because I wasn't part of the process, though. Just a little comment here. I don't think we should act as in any defensive manner with any defensive language, but I abstain.
So if, if he's abstaining, then, then you shouldn't be, you like you, as a full commission member, you should be participating.
Yeah, I mean, we have half the commission members that were part of the process and half the commission members were not part of the P O C D subcommittee, so you're welcome to vote, but if you're going to abstain, then.
Then you shouldn't vote on the whole.
You shouldn't vote on the whole thing then.
Okay, so on this point I'll abstain, but on, on the next uh points, I will uh vote either yay and a in that case.
Okay. Tom Benton?
Vote yes.
And Eric Knowles?
No.
Okay, this one passes. Keeping this one. Uh, page twelve, the under education and income uh suggestion was to remove which the last portion of the sentence which says, which has limited those who can afford to live in the community. Or if one of you wants to suggest a rewrite of that, that's fine too.
Uh, which is limited certain demographics who can afford to live in the community?
Like, I would say income levels versus demographics, because I think afford.
Does that really solve it? It's still just pointing out that, that, that's then pointing out that lower income can't enter, which then plays into the eight thirty G concern that I think some of you have.
I think, I think, I, I just don't want it to be characterized as because they're expensive, it's related to race or related to age and which is what I think, I think so. I, that was, that was what I was trying to avoid, but.
I mean, I think it is, I mean, personally, I think it is related to both because
Income is.
Income is, tends to be a function of age and sometimes race unfortunately.
I think we should keep the way Dan wrote it.
Okay.
So removing, removing that last portion of the sentence then?
Yeah, that's my feeling.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I pulled back my, my edit then.
Okay. All right, we'll call to vote on this one as well. Dan Radman, I vote yes. Kristin Nielsen?
Yes.
Uh, John Cris?
Yes.
Chris Herring?
Yes.
John Engel?
Yes.
Paul Nag?
Yes.
Alan Swirlo?
Yes.
Uh, Tom Benton?
Yes.
And Eric Knowles?
No.
Um, I also had a comment on uh, number page sixteen. The first one.
The home values and rental costs?
Right, and the request to.
Wait, so does that mean we're doing fourteen and fifteen?
Fourteen.
Like, could we just go in order at this point?
Fourteen is not a change.
It's not a change. It was just a confirmation of the housing diversity percentage numbers. I don't know, Robert, if you want to speak to that briefly.
Um, uh, sorry, Commissioner Remen, this was the question about where we got our numbers from?
Yes.
For that question, uh, the American Community Survey, the U, the US Census American Community Survey.
The American what?
American Community Survey, which is the um, annual survey that the, the US Census conducts. And adds all that information about housing. Beyond the, the regular counts.
And the one thing I also want, one thing I also wanted to add, just at this section, you know, and they, again, this is a summary of the appendix A, which does include all the resource, all the sources of data, and it, it does stipulate that at the very beginning of the chapter, that if you have any questions about the data sources or where it came from, you have to refer to that.
That's fine. Um, and then page fifteen, uh, under housing composition and housing unit sizes, my I, I did not craft a sentence here, but I was. John did and looking to incorporate that if possible.
Send that to me. Could you just send it to me if you have it?
Okay, um, let me just reread it for the record here for people to vote. It's um, post-COVID, there has been a significant increase of town residents working from home on a partial or full-time basis, period. This is partly a reflection of the types of jobs many town residents have, period. This is also driving the need for larger homes with properly equipped home offices, some of which are repurposed bedrooms. Uh, I can state my own case, that is the case, and looking at various, I mean, speaking with many realtors in town, I see more and more advertisements saying home office, home office, well done, home office and so on, which I didn't hear about five, six years ago. So I think this is just a, frankly, a, a rather innocuous statement of fact. Um, that is affecting uh housing in town, given the types of jobs that many people have.
Including that, those sentences?
I have mixed feelings only because I agree that I wonder if it could just be made a little bit more generic because um, when you say that it's a statement of fact, we don't actually, to be honest, we don't actually have official data to back that up at this point. We know that it's people on the, you know, that this um, the planning and zoning commissioner saying that it's their situation. They've talked to neighbors and friends. But we don't actually have a data point to officially back it up.
We, we can, um, I think one proxy for that data, um, Robert, is that the Metro North Community um Transit numbers have dropped significantly within the branch line. That point to, I think.
I believe they've gone back up though somewhat, but they haven't reached the level of two thousand nineteen.
I mean, I, I think the key here is that if, if you have access to that data and can refer us to that data to confirm it, that's, that's perfectly fine. It's just, you know, it can't just be that you assume that from the twenty.
Like a very anecdotal statement.
No, I disagree.
Without, without any sort of analysis they can provide, but I've not seen the analysis.
I mean, it could be.
Just remember what this chapter is, as Robert had said, is that it, this is true data analysis and it's not.
That's fair.
I understand, I understand, but I'm, I'm, I'd be surprised if there's not data out there proving the fact that there are more people working from home now than there were in twenty twenty. It's gotta be.
There may be, but this is the night we're supposed to adopt the plan. It's not the time to go looking for more data.
I mean, you, you could make it so that it's not so matter of fact. You could say that, um, I mean, and, and Julia, you might have some language too, but it could maybe say something along the lines of, uh, I keep saying that it, it's perceived that maybe more people are working from home, there, you know, or something along those lines.
Trend.
Like there, there appears to be a trend, something like that, but you just, you just can't state it as like a statement of fact because um, you know.
Yeah, you could say something like residents, residents and real estate professionals have observed a trend of increased uh work from home or interest in home offices.
That's a really good way, yeah, like that there's an increased interest or something like that. I think that might get to the point, but it it, it at least, it, it keeps it from needing to be backed up by data.
Mr. Cris, are you okay with that?
Yes.
So why don't? So how about this, um, there's been an, post-COVID, there's been an increase of town residents working from home on a partial full-time basis. I think that's a safe statement.
It appears to be.
It appears to be.
Are you working from home more than it was before?
Yeah.
More time in the office, four days a week? Yes, I'm going to Manhattan four days a week.
So did I, yes or no, Commissioner?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Are you working more at home, yes or no? Dan, prior to COVID. He just did a quick search and it, it comes up in terms of the work from home is exceeding the national average.
Documents that should be.
I, I'm working at home more.
Based on US Census, American, American Community Survey.
So the data's out there. Released by the Census Bureau.
So how about this? You can send the link to Sarah. She can share with SLR and we keep the language that John Cris came up with. It's my recommendation.
You're voting on it?
We're about to. Everyone's clear. Uh, John, Mr. Chris read his statement. We have a quick search providing data um from the US American Census Survey showing the same. Uh, and we're gonna vote on it, so. Dan Radman, I vote yes. Kristin Nielsen?
No.
Uh, John Cris?
Yes.
Chris Herring?
Yes.
Uh, John Engel?
Yes.
Paul Nag?
Yes.
Alan Swirlo?
No.
Uh, Tom Benton?
Uh, vote yes.
And Eric Knowles?
No.
Okay, that passes six to three. Okay, uh, page sixteen, the lack of housing units. Value bill hosts five hundred thousand suggests a significant barrier for individuals wishing to move into or downsize within the community. Again, I'm just suggesting removing that sentence. I, I'm just, I guess I'm adverse to the significant barrier here.
Would you be okay with taking the word significant out?
What if you say poses a challenge for individuals?
I'm good with that.
So instead of suggests a significant barrier, just poses, poses a challenge or suggests a challenge?
Suggest or.
Significant barrier indicates a degree that's measurable.
Keeping it simple here. I would, I would say poses a challenge instead of suggests a significant. Uh, keeping it simple here, I would, I would say poses a challenge, instead of suggests a significant barrier.
Seems like there's general consensus on that. No need to vote, I guess.
Yeah, I'm good with that, no.
Um, vote, uh, Dan Radman, a vote yes on that one. Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
John Cris.
Yes.
Chris Herring.
Yes.
Uh, John Engel.
Yes.
Paul Knag.
Yes.
Uh, Alan Swedlow.
No.
Tom Benton.
Yes.
And Eric Knowles.
Yes.
Okay, that one passes. Um, again, the, the page sixteen, the ninety, uh, two thousand twenty-one, ninety point nine percent of rental units cost two thousand or more, and this was, again, um, where we got that data from.
Uh, yes, Commissioner Radman, I will take that. Um, so that was from rental listings, but if we have a alternate source that is in the um, full data deck, and that's the American Community Survey, and the American Community Survey includes all, it, it's based on what people report, so that includes if they're living in subsidized um, affordable housing. Um, so that number, if we update it to the American Community Survey, which includes, you know, non-market rate units, um, the number of seventy-one percent are over two thousand per month.
Uh, okay, so did, did the, did the data come from MLS listings?
It's from, yeah, from our, um, our real estate, um,
Yeah.
source, that, the Warren Group, which I believe sources from, from
Right.
MLS. But, but that, for the ninety point nine, but for the seventy-one percent, that's from the American Community Survey, which is based on individuals filling out their surveys, saying what they pay in rent per month.
Mm-hmm.
So that is
I, I, I would say the seventy percent is probably more accurate in the, the, again, to my point earlier, the amount, the reported MLS surveys. People who are renting in this town, if they're going through MLS, they're usually looking at um, substantially more uh, expensive rental units, houses, apartments, condos, whatever that may be. I know from personal experience that most of the renters that are renting in more affordable units um, don't bother with MLS, because they're not finding anything there. They're going direct. Uh, they're going with paper ads, et cetera. Um, so how do we, how do we adjust for that, or adjust the statement to reflect that?
So I would also just jump in. I know there's concern, I think just in general, is you wanna be compared properly to benchmark communities, and I think the key is that this data would be similarly skewed for benchmark communities, because this, you know, naturally occurring affordable housing, where it's more word of mouth, that things are getting rented, and that's the cheaper stuff, that is also falling through the cracks in every other municipality's data. So I would, that makes me personally much more comfortable with the data, and again, this is really the gold standard of data that's available, so it's either, we can add in language to soften that, to make it known that we're not including naturally occurring affordable housing, maybe, or just not addressing it whatsoever, because, again, all data for every community is going to be like this.
I don't think it's accurate the way it's written, based on
I think we should change it to seventy-one percent.
Seventy-one percent, okay.
From the, the ACS, um.
So language, I would basically say, per the ACS in two thousand twenty-one, seventy, or whatever that number was, of rental units cost two thousand or more per month.
I think citing the data sources is important.
The data source would be cited in the sentence, Sarah?
Yes.
Yeah, that's better.
Yes, and it's a very good idea.
That's where I was going, is ninety percent of MLS listed, or, you know, you could do seventy percent of the survey. Yeah.
And both data points are in the um, uh, community profile, so it's just a matter of choosing the other one, which is the ACS data, and then clarifying that.
That's fine.
I just wanna make a point here. I, I'm the, the person on the panel, there may be others, who actually downsized and moved to New Canaan because of the fact that there were many rental opportunities for me here, and where I came from, west end, there were zero in terms of apartments or condos. So, um, and I think eastern is similar to that. So i- in terms of this, I think we are actually doing better than it seems to suggest in the way we've written it.
I agree, and that's, that's why I think modifying it to the seventy percent and citing the source is probably a, a a better reflection of the, of the levels we're at.
The data in the P O C D does state that the um, housing diversity, as far as condos, apartments, and so forth, is more than some, many adjacent communities.
Okay, so, um, we'll leave it to SLR to wordsmith that one, um, to include
With, I assume what, like what I said?
Like what you said, yes.
Yep, and I'll, I'll send it to you.
Um, take a quick vote on that. Dan Radman, a vote yes. Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
Uh, John Cris.
Yes.
Chris Herring.
Yes.
John Engel.
Yes.
Paul Knag, yes. Alan Swedlow.
Yes.
Tom Benton.
Yes.
Eric Knowles.
Yes.
Great. Uh, Housing Affordability, page seventeen, modify sentence, um, add a sentence to the par, uh, in the third paragraph, well, sorry, modify the sentence in the second paragraph to be the following: "Percentage of households in New Canaan that are considered low-income has increased part and due to the increase in affordable housing units. The town of New Canaan is constructed as part of New Canaan Parish, of Canaan Parish and Mill River."
Shouldn't it be Milport?
Is it Milport? Sorry.
Milport, yes, it's Milport.
My concern with that
One word.
Language is just, do we have the data to confirm that? You know, like, I would maybe soften it more to say that, um, this may be because, like, I, I, I just worry about saying how it's phrased, because we, I don't think we actually know if that's accurate or not.
Well, I'm, I'm saying, in, in part due to the increase
Certainly, certainly, that's part of the picture, right?
Which may be in part, yeah, that's fine.
But again, if we don't have the data, it's a data-driven exercise.
We do know how many units.
No, I, I, I think that's good, which may be in part. And then the add a sentence in the third paragraph uh, to the following, uh, "All of the units that New Canaan Housing Authority has constructed will remain affordable housing in perpetuity and will not be expiring in forty years, like typically forty, eight thirty G state-mandated projects." Again, just
So I don't saying in perpetuity could potentially be misleading. I think it's just important to note that, like, Milport, as an example, has a ninety-year deed restriction, um, so
Everyone that's, yeah.
No, I was gonna say, everyone that's reading, it'll be dead by then, but
I, I probably
The town owns it, they're not gonna, it's not gonna do, uh, cease being, uh, house, uh, affordable housing at any point in time, right? There's no, there's no, no cutoff.
No, for, for the, the town ones?
Yeah.
No, except the lease.
The deed restrictions end in ninety years.
Right.
For Milport.
So it's not in perpetuity.
True, okay.
A longer timeframe.
You could basically say, are not limited. How about this, like, for, for, are not
Are not limited by that.
Forty years.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Like typical.
Yeah.
But are not limited, yeah, okay.
Are not limited.
To forty years, like your typical eight thirty G. And that implies that it's much longer.
Yep.
But it doesn't say
Yeah, okay.
All of the units that New Canaan Housing Authority has constructed will remain as affordable housing and are not limited to forty years, like the typical eight thirty G state-mandated projects. Done. Okay, call to a quick vote on those two items on page seventeen. Dan Radman, a vote yes.
Sorry, can I ask one?
Yes, of course.
Where does, where is that sentence going?
Uh,
Adding it in the third paragraph?
Paragraph, I'm, I'm going to the page. Page seventeen.
After the single-family Connecticut housing and mortgages.
Add a sentence in the third paragraph. Uh,
I would just do it after the first sentence.
I would do, it was after the what, the last sentence?
No, the first sentence.
The New Canaan Housing Authority manages two hundred units. Uh, all of the units, okay.
Yeah, I would do it after the first sentence, that makes sense.
Okay.
I think I had it as the, at the end of the paragraph, but that's okay, that, that works. After the first sentence. Okay, call a quick vote here. Dan Radman, a vote yes. Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
John Cris.
Yes.
Chris Herring.
Yes.
Uh, John Engel.
Yes.
Paul Knag.
Yes.
Alan Swedlow.
Yes.
Tom Benton.
Yes.
And Eric Knowles.
Yes.
Great. Uh, page eighteen, under employment, modify the statement to read, um, adding the statement, "But this has been changing since COVID pandemic, where an increasing number of New Canaan residents now work from home or work in town in satellite offices."
I, I would suggest that this appears to have been changing since the COVID pandemic, where it is likely that an increasing number of New Canaan residents
Likely.
So on, because we don't have the data.
Okay.
Okay, um, but this appears to have been changing since the COVID pandemic, where it is likely there's an increasing number of New Canaan residents now working from home or work in town in satellite offices.
I have a question for SLR. I assume
This is something that planners focus on, where people work. What has your research told you broadly?
Well, again, well, well, maybe I'll start, and then we'll let Julia go. Um, I mean, obviously, we use ACS data for looking at, you know, trends with employment, and the good thing is, is that they are doing that you know, every year, and then they add it to the five-year estimates, you know, to get a, a close approximation. Um, you know, COVID is, you know, almost five years ago now, so we are starting to have a little bit more you know, solid data. I mean, a lot of people were making some assumptions about this, like, a year or two later, and you really, as a demographer, you really need to look at trends over five, ten, or even longer time periods, to make sure that those trends are, in fact, staying in place. Um, so I think that we are getting to a place where that's, the data is starting to show that a little bit more detail. Um, but I think it's something that does need to be considered, uh, continue to be modified through the life of the P O C D, because the COVID pandemic did adjust demographics so unusually.
Well, being in finance that deals with, uh, commercial real estate, uh, including office real estate, um, the brokers whom I have seen, spoken, and seen research in many cities in the, in the States, talk about the uh, return to office, and exactly where we are, and how many people, the average is like, what, three point one days in the office, which is only up from where it was. Uh, and so there, I think there is a fair amount of emerging data on this. It may not be in the sources you use, but you talk to the brokers, they're gonna tell you a lot about exactly where people are working in and what conditions.
I would, uh, tend to agree with what we just said. The, um, what we see in the architecture world is the first rush, uh, rush to determine what to do with, uh, Class B office spaces, which are being vacated. But more importantly, uh, the understanding that this trend is reversing. Uh, people are now, or companies are now demanding their, their employees attend work three to five days a week. And on top of that, I, I, my own experience with younger people is they actually want to return to work, not necessarily five days a week, but several days a week. So it's, I think it's really hard to, uh, cite a trend, when five years from now, we'll, we may be in the absolutely opposite situation.
Yeah, I agree with that. As somebody who works in the zoning world, um, we've seen a number of projects that have increased their office component when two or three years ago, in New York City, they weren't. I'm sure there's a lot of office space, but still there, but it is being repurposed, and my firm alone is looking to increase its footprint because it's mandated to be in the office four days a week, so.
I'm three days. The pendulum swings.
Yep, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think there's a problem with, you know, discussing a possible trend, and to say you're gonna continue to monitor it, since it's like an ongoing trend. I just wanna be careful not to say that it's like a statement of fact, and this is what it's gonna be again in ten years from now. But I think the language that we adjusted for this one is, is, is really good.
Yeah, adding appears and likely seems to take care of that. So this is, again, the underemployment, page eighteen. Let's take a quick vote on this one. Dan Radman, a vote yes. Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
Uh, John Cris.
Yes.
Chris Herring.
Yes.
John Engel.
Yes.
Paul Knag.
Yes.
Alan Swedlow.
Yes.
Tom Benton.
Yes.
Eric Knowles.
Yes.
Okay, easy one.
Page nineteen, under live work in New Canaan, um, modify the first sentence in the second paragraph, this is page nineteen. First sentence, uh, yeah, according to the regional P O C D, um, New Canaan's downtown area, this is the one where I just took out the South Avenue reference.
So the other thing is, like, that's coming straight from West Cog's regional plan, so I, it's either, to me personally, I would either reference the regional P O C D or don't, because I think trying to alter what
References South Avenue?
Yeah, so that's what the regional P O C D is, that's West Cog's plan.
I understand that. I just didn't know that they referenced South Avenue specifically.
They do. Right, I mean, they're taking this straight from someone else's document here.
Then, then leave it the way it is. Okay, strike that one. Uh, fiscal health. Um.
Discuss that one already?
Say again?
That one already, that
That's good.
It's, we can't compare to
Yeah.
Other.
Yeah, we can strike that one, too. It's fine.
In fiscal health, I would make, um, one change, and it's a technical one. It says, um, leaving the town more vulnerable to changes within the housing market, it, I think it should change to in housing values, because it's values that drive the grand list, housing market can mean sales data or something else. So say, changes in housing values.
So leaving the town more vulnerable to changes in housing values?
Period. We're talking about here, I depended on residential taxes, taxes are from the grand list, and so housing values drive the grand list, drive the mill rate, and all. That's my point.
I have a citation after it, though, I don't know. Number thirty-four, I don't know where to look to find that, but I just don't know if that
So all the, I'll, I'll check that, if you all wanna continue your discussions onward, I, because I know where the citations are.
Yeah. Okay, so the only change is market to values, or proposed change.
In housing values, yes, sir.
Right. Okay. Do we need to vote on that one? Still just take a look at the reference point?
I was really only recommending voting if there was contention, so I mean, if
Okay, so
Everyone's
I, Sarah, I believe that footnote is just for, um, the actual data itself, not the conclusion of, you know
Okay, like the, so they're like eighty-seven point three percent, sixty-five point one percent stuff, okay.
Correct.
One, see. Okay, all right.
I have one comment, um, and on, on just a, maybe a clarification or addition to, uh, what I think is a good addition to page twenty-nine, under public transportation.
Yeah, before we, sorry, before we get there.
Yeah.
Um, so we're agreeing to just change that one word in the previous paragraph under fiscal health, going from housing market to housing values. Um,
Changes in housing values, period.
Sure. Uh, Dan Radman, a vote yes. Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
Uh, John Cris.
Yes.
Uh, Chris Herring.
Yep.
Uh, John Engel.
Yes.
Paul Knag.
Yes.
Uh, Alan Swedlow.
Yes.
Tom Benton.
Yes.
And Eric Knowles.
Yes.
Great. Sorry, go ahead. Page twenty-nine, public transportation.
Okay, so, um, so I think this is a good concept to add, that just characterizing this line, I think you'd add, that this is a commuter line with limited frequency of service. I was just gonna add a little incremental uh, description by saying, "This is a single-track spur commuter line with limited capacity of service."
Totally agreed.
The exact same comment, uh, limited. Somebody who take, I would say moderate, somebody who takes it every day, and they make three trains in the seven o'clock hour.
Moderate, okay.
Trains in the five o'clock hour, which matches, say, if you're going to Darien.
Yeah, mo- moderate, yeah, okay. So, so this is a single-track spur commuter line with moderate capacity of service? I think what, what I'm trying to avoid there is just to portray it as like a, a through train stop.
Correct.
That's what I'm trying to avoid, too, yeah.
Single track issue, I agree, Commissioner, it's important, it's been discussed any number of times in the town, that that is a limiting factor, and
Agreed. Increasing service.
I just wanna make sure of this. This is a single-track spur commuter line with moderate capacity and frequency of service.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Dan Radman, a vote yes. Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
John Cris.
Yes.
Yes.
Chris Herring.
Yes.
John Engel.
Yes.
Uh, Paul Knag.
Yes.
Alan Swedlow.
Yes.
Uh, Tom Benton.
Yes.
Eric Knowles.
Yes.
Sounds good. Um, sustainability. Multi-Stewart's Market, we're keeping that in there. Page, uh, forty-seven. Um, this is where I struck through on the word remarkably in that paragraph and struck out with these amendments, New Canaan reduced allowable residential density townwide and added the sentence as well as further defining the denser portion of town in the half acre third A B multifamily and apartment zones.
So, uh, I'll just say I, I wrote this section, so that doesn't matter, but I, I specifically said remarkably similar to the nineteen thirty-two zoning regulation because I think it is important to highlight that we have a strong history of planning in New Canaan and it is, it is remarkable that our zoning map is the same shape and very much the same patterns as it was in the nineteen thirties. So it's okay if the word remarkable, isn't it? But I think it's important to highlight that most places are not like that. And it's not a bad thing. It's just.
Say, does it hurt us or help us?
I, I mean, I, I understand that there's this concern that the P O C D is this tool and a weapon that's going to be used against us, but it's, at the end of the day, it's, it's not. This is just a document stating facts about New Canaan and what our goals are for the future. So I I think this very focused lens on how is this plan going to be used against us in the future is personally the wrong lens to be reviewing this under.
But it's, it happens to us all the time. I think that.
It doesn't hold up in court, though, what the, that.
I have a question. Where would you put the remarkably similar words back in?
Where he, so.
Where I struck them out.
Yeah, the twenty twenty-four zoning map is remarkably similar to the nineteen thirty-two zoning map.
Right there.
Oh, it's at the top. I was looking, sorry, I was looking in the second paragraph, my error.
Okay. I, I'm sorry to be talking over you.
No, go.
I, I think the fact is that, uh, New Canaan has been a leader really in, uh, recognizing the needs for, uh, uh, multifamily townhouses, uh, condos, uh, I know living in Darien, I ended up in New Canaan because of that. Uh, and, uh, I, I, I think that the problem with the language, that the word remarkably in, in particular, it sounds like, uh, you know, we never did anything to accommodate changing needs.
That's, that's the, the, that's the view I was taking.
And I think we have, I, I think we have, uh, uh, been a leader really in, uh, in, uh, responding to changing needs, uh, while at the same time, uh, hopefully successfully maintaining the character of the town. Uh, and, you know, I could point out a couple of things I would have done differently if I was on the planning a zoning in earlier years, but, uh, overall, I think we certainly have been successful while at the same time having a nice stock of, uh, housing such as I live in, uh, which is, uh, our co- uh, townhouse. So I, that's why I think that, uh, Dan would, um, have, uh, decided that remarkably might be misconstrued, uh, and, uh, why we should take it out.
Look, I would like to agree with what we just said. Uh, when I moved, I did an exhaustive search of the various towns around, around here. Fairfield, Westport, uh, Norwalk and so on and so forth. And it was actually New Canaan that presented the best opportunities to me. So s- some of what we're discussing tonight about how New Canaan is, is quote unquote failing at certain things, I don't personally agree with. I think it has an incredible diverse housing stock compared to those other towns around us, not necessarily other places. And it's a really interesting place with all kinds of, uh, odd things happening in terms of the commercial world that you wouldn't really see anywhere else. Mom and pop stores, a banner store on, on Elm Street and so on and so forth. So uh, I don't think we should be that neg- uh, any, as negative or pessimistic as we are kind of trending towards.
So I think it's just the rhetoric is negative, but I don't think the plan is calling out failures of New Canaan. I think the plan is just trying, the, the chapters we were talking about before is just stating fact and there's concern that it's going to be construed negatively. But I don't, I don't think it, the plan itself is.
No, the plan itself is negative and, and I'm not suggesting it is, but I'm just.
Yeah, so I have.
Changes I've made are just to help further, further elaborate on the fact that the, of the diversity of the housing stock in the town.
Oh, I, I have no objection to your second sen- like the sentence you want to add. I'm, I'm not objecting to that or anything like that. I'm, I'm just saying.
Sentence is not referring to the development trends, referring to the zoning map, correct?
Correct.
Right, so the zoning map has not, I mean, maybe development trends have changed in the past a hundred years or ninety years, but the zoning map itself is remarkably similar to what it was in nineteen thirty-two. If that's a factual statement, I, I don't see what the, but we're not saying that development trends haven't changed. I think a number of people who have been here over how many ever years have seen that change outright with the, with the growth of, of kind of the downtown area and South Avenue and that sort of thing, but I think this is just a factual statement that it's, the map itself. And we've even had conversations in the past, I think, with certain applicants who've come here who've tried to, you know, enlarge the retail zone and that sort of thing. We've, you know, said it hasn't been touched, you know, apartment zone regs haven't been touched since fifty-eight and you know, things like that. So I think we're just kind of stating a, a fact, um.
I, I, I don't see any difference with stating that fact and still eliminating the word remarkably. It still says the same thing.
Quite very, I, I don't know.
I, I.
Yeah, I don't want to overcomplicate it. I just wanted to make that known that there, this isn't an ill intention of, oh, we're, we're limiting everything and we have since the thirties. This is just a, our zoning map is very similar and that's not common.
It's unique, it is, but
unique is one of a kind, but.
Yeah, but to Mr. Knag's point and the, the way I was reading it is by, by leaving remarkably in there and not referencing the other zones other than the one or two acre zones, it makes it sound like we've done nothing with our zoning map in the last eighty years. That's the perception I get when reading that.
Right, you go to between nineteen forty, nineteen sixty.
I, I get that.
Several amendments to zoning regulations have increased, right, that, that.
I mean, I think, I think it's important to be clear that during those times, the New Canaan Planning and Zoning Commission did shrink the apartment zone, did shrink these other.
And we've created other zones and we've done, we've done things to evolve the zoning map, so I, I, I'd like to just.
Again, I have no, I have no problem with the second sentence. I'm just making sure that you, you all don't inadvertently say something that's not correct.
Mr. Chairman, I have some grammatical edits, apologies. Um, it's on the second sentence where the, uh, the red areas. Um, just criticism. So between nineteen, let me read my edit. Between nineteen forty, nineteen sixty, New Canaan adopted several amendments to the zoning regulations that increased minimum lot size to one acre, two acre and four acre lots. Um, in what are now known as the one, two and four acre residence zones, so are zones, okay. Comma, as well as for the defining, because the as well you have here is not a sentence.
Yep.
That's my grammatical edit. On the next sentence, say since, I would just change it to subsequent to these amendments. So it's, not changing the point, it's just grammatical.
Yep.
Systems, that's my point.
I'm fine with those changes.
Bad grammar can get into great challenges.
Anybody else? Any further comments on this one?
You can't just say there's Scrubner problems.
Let's take a vote on this one.
Yep, I've seen it.
Guys, ready?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mr. No problem. Let's do a vote. Um, this is on the page forty-seven edits. Uh, Dan Radman, I vote yes, Krista Nielsen.
I vote, I would keep remarkable, but I'm fine with adding the red sentence, the way that John Cris stated it. So I don't know what to do with that, sorry.
Halfway in between.
Yeah. I'm fifty fifty.
Uh, okay. Um. Does anyone feel passionately with the whole remarkably? One way or another?
Quite. I, I don't know, some, some other sort of, you know, modifier.
Okay. Not the bed, which is what I. Yeah.
But. Yeah, I, I can back off of it. Nobody else is in favor.
Just take the rest of the votes, ignore my fifty fifty.
Okay.
Come back to me if I need to.
Sounds good. I'll put you right on the line in the middle here.
Okay.
John Cris.
Yes.
Uh, Chris Herring.
Uh, yes.
John Engel.
Yes.
Paul Knag.
Yes.
Uh, Alan Swedlow.
Yes.
Tom Benton.
Yes.
And Eric Knowles.
Yes.
Uh, fifty-two policy. This one, this one besides leave it the way it is, right? Um, goal two point two, uh, this was on page sixty. Uh, adding, this is in contrast to the state eight thirty G projects, which are only affordable for a limited amount of forty years. Just adding that sentence in there. And you have, anybody having comments or criticism of that?
So I'll just say, if the goal of the town is to disincentivize the usage of eight thirty G, which you state later on in that paragraph, we're mentioning eight thirty G a lot in this plan and you're bringing it right to the forefront of people's minds as they read it. So I don't know if it's necessary to mention eight thirty G twice in one paragraph.
That's fair. I can see that. That's the point.
Yeah, I mean, I, I didn't think it really added anything. I think it's kind of a necessary addition.
Okay.
That's fine. To your point, I mean, we're, we're mentioning eight thirty G at the end of that paragraph anyway, um, in terms of how we're trying to achieve the moratorium, working working to avoid it. So that's fine. I'm okay with striking that. So we'll drop the comment on page sixty. Page sixty-one. Uh, consider establishing a limited and focused transit oriented overlay district.
Sir Chairman, I would just say focused. I think limited focus is sort of focus gets the job done.
I'm fine with that.
I would be shocked if this commission would do anything that is unfocused.
That's fine.
My personal opinion is, again, I think this is unnecessary. I think transit oriented development or transit oriented overlays districts, I mean, as we talked at the subcommittee level are generally always focused within a half and a quarter mile, which to me is pretty limited and pretty focused. So to me, by definition, transit oriented, oriented development is limited and focused because it's oriented around transit.
But not to the layperson that's reading the P O C D that may not be totally familiar with what T O Ds are.
I don't think the terms limited and focused clarifies that. I think we should remove them as what we just said. I think, uh, transit oriented is fine. It's very, very much explains what we're, we're trying to go with this.
Okay. Anybody else?
I would just say focused and do it at that. I'm okay saying limited and focused, but I think it's repetitive.
Well, then the, the obverse of that is unfocused. So you, you're implying, implying that if we just say transit oriented, it's really just unfocused. And I, I, I don't understand that. I think, uh, too much wording in a sentence makes things unclear. And suspect and defensive as well.
Russ, can you restate what you said?
What I, well, I wasn't proposing any change. I would leave it without the addition of limited and focus because in my opinion, by definition, transit oriented, oriented development is limited and focused around transit. Like that is the definition of that word.
Yeah.
I would, I would disagree that if you look at sort of quarter mile or half mile and include things like our, um, historic districts and so forth, so I think whatever transit oriented development or historic district sort of, uh, seems a bit far fetched to me. And so that is why I would suggest focused would be, uh, more appropriate, given the location of various adjacencies.
I would just highlight that I think, you know, throughout this public comment period, transit oriented development has gotten a little mischaracterized. Yes, in certain cases it means denser housing, but in other cases, it just means walkability and access to transit. So I think you, you do want transit oriented development to a capacity in your historic district because you want to make sure that all the sidewalks connect to the train station. That's, that is a key component of transit oriented development, so it, it's not just about denser housing and I just, I think it's important to remember that.
So I think that, uh, you know, there was this, uh, statute that didn't pass, but had been proposed. Uh, where, uh, they were gonna essentially, uh, they're gonna broadly exempt development, uh, near, uh, uh, transit uh, from, uh, our review. Uh.
Who is gonna do that?
The state. Uh, they would, there, there was.
Big initiative.
There was a statute that was proposed that would greatly similar to, you know, different, but same concept as the ADG that, uh, they would, the, the certain aspects of the, of our zoning rights would, our zoning, uh, powers would be, uh, overwoven by the state provided within a certain distance from the train station. Now, that didn't pass, but the, you know, the group of developers and others who were pushing this are, you know, presumably, uh, maybe back with that again. Uh, and I, I, I don't know exactly why that language was proposed, but, you know, from my standpoint, uh, uh, the, that would be in contrast and we would do it in a focused way as opposed to what might be imposed on us by, uh, the state which would be, uh, uh, you know, outsiders, uh, in an unfocused way, uh, forcing us to accept certain development uh, uh, in, uh, the transit area.
So I just want to jump in really quickly because I think this came up a lot, um, during our public comment, um, period over the summer and the purpose of this inclusion in the plan is specifically to define what transit oriented development means for New Canaan and specifically is, was included to ensure that we are defining it and not the state.
Right.
So, so that is very, and I think that is communicated multiple times throughout the plan. We, the subcommittee spent time making sure in the future land use plan paragraph about it that we clearly said what works for New Canaan. Um, so I just want to make that very clear that this is especially meant to not make us be at the mercy of the state. This is us to create our own destiny.
We're saying we're gonna look at this ourselves, so you shouldn't have, the state shouldn't have to feel that they're gonna impose things on us.
Correct.
And, and this is charging us as a commissioner or the town or wherever it is to create that transit oriented overlay district, right? So I, 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 to, to limited and focused, I would delete again because gives us the power to work to create that in a manner that, you know, is reasonable.
You guys ready to vote on it at this point? I mean, I think there's been a lot of discussion. Do I just want to vote on it?
Ready to vote. I mean, just, just to put a pin in it, my only, my, my main consideration for adding that language, and I'm okay with putting just focused in there, was more for a clarification for the layperson in town that's reading this thing. It's a real trigger point to a lot of people in town, the T O D and anything to do with T O D. And to be able to reinforce that it's a, a focused solution for the downtown to a lot of these people who don't, don't who don't know the details and the, the history or what a T O D exactly is. And at least it lends a little bit of um, uh, reinforcement that it's going to be a, a strategic and well, quite frankly, focused area of development. That's all. I'm suggesting, my suggestion is leave focused and we can vote yes or no. Simple as that.
Point I would note, uh, as you, I'm sure you remember, Ms. Carey, this was a point that was brought up more than once by the town council.
It was.
Um, so I'll just put that out there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
One of the biggest points that they brought up, so. Uh, anyway, this is to include the word focused in that sentence under strategy two point two point two. Uh, Dan Radman, I vote yes, Krista Nielsen.
No.
Uh, John Cris.
Yes.
Chris Herring.
Yes.
Uh, John Engel.
Yes.
Paul Knag.
Yes.
Alan Swedlow.
You're muted.
You're muted.
Sorry, um, I'll vote no.
Okay, uh, Tom Benton.
I'd no.
And Eric Knowles.
No.
We have a tie.
No, it's five to four.
Are there nine? Okay, sorry.
Are there nine? Okay, sorry. There are only eight.
Six and three.
Okay, I can't do math.
Yeah, five to four passes. Takes care of those comments.
Eighty-one, what were we planning on, eighty-one?
I think eighty-one and eighty-two.
We uh, eighty-one, we said uh.
More strategies such as Vision Zone Network, I think was, I think that was it.
I thought we said, because we're referencing so many of their um, experts in the deals, so leave it in there.
Fine.
Okay. Um, Sarah, do you want to go through the others?
I would just recommend that, you know, this was all sent out to you, this was, the two documents I sent were extremely vetted, I think we had, what, a three and a half hour meeting by the subcommittee, so I, I would only, if, if, uh, any of the members who are not on the subcommittee disagree with something, I would bring it up, but otherwise I wouldn't, I don't think there's a need to discuss it.
I agree.
I move to approve the uh uh plan of uh P O C D uh uh with the, as a in the form.
Read the first one.
We have two motions we have to do.
Already, yes. I move to incorporate all substantial and non-substantial edits recommended by the P O C D Subcommittee that were discussed at their September twenty-fifth meeting uh into the current draft of the P O C T, P O C D along with the changes that we've uh voted on at this meeting.
Do I have a second? John Cris, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, I, I think there were a couple of like map edits and things like that, but those get in?
Yes, those did, uh, it's, they're listed in the, they're in the non-substantial document, yeah.
Yeah, gotcha, thank you for that clarification, appreciate it.
Okay. So that.
Second in that, sorry.
John Cris? Okay. Uh, take a vote, um, Dan Radman, I vote yes, Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
John Cris?
Yes.
Chris Herring?
Yes.
John Engel?
Yes.
Paul Knag?
Yes.
Alan Swedlow?
Yes.
Tom Benton?
Yes.
And then Eric Knowles?
Yes.
Good, so that takes care of the incorporating all these substantial and non-substantial edits and comments. And the final, uh, do I have a motion to adopt the P O C D?
This language you're gonna read?
Yes.
I will move to adopt the P O C D draft and its appendices with the edits voted on by the commission tonight, and that it be adopted by the Planning and Zoning Commission as our twenty-twenty-four Plan of Conservation and Development with an effective date of November first, twenty-twenty-four.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Chris Herring? Uh, call to vote, Dan Radman, I vote yes, Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
John Cris?
Yes.
Chris Herring?
Yes.
John Engel?
Yes.
Paul Knag?
Yes.
Alan Swedlow?
Yes.
Tom Benton?
Yes.
And Eric Knowles?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment or two to make, if I have any.
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
With New Canaan's updated Plan of Conservation Development now approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, for a job well done, I would like to thank my fellow P O C D Subcommittee members, Tom Benton, Chris Herring, Krista Nielsen, Dan Radman, and former Commissioner Kent Turner for their ideas, diligence, and hours of hard work, our consultants, S L R, for their professionalism and patience, and especially New Canaan's outstanding head of zoning, Sarah Carey, whose wisdom, energy, creativity, and organizational skills are truly a wonder to behold. In addition, I want to thank First Selectmen Deanna Carlson and Selectmen Steve Carl and Amy Murphy Carroll for their leadership and support, the town council for endorsing our P O C D draft and for their recommendations, senior town staff and members of peer boards and commissions for abundant ideas, and the thirty people who submitted over one hundred photographs for inclusion in the P O C D. Last, but very much not least, I want to thank the residents of New Canaan. One of my key goals as chairman of our P O C D update was to do all that could be done to ensure that everyone was aware of our joint work on this important document, and in particular to promote, to provide ample forums for residents to speak, listen, and educate and inform us and each other. The outstanding response rate for our initial survey, robust participation in multiple community meetings, emails, and ideas were beyond gratifying. You were heard. In the end, New Canaan's P O C D is everyone's P O C D, and the hundreds upon hundreds of residents who have shared their collective wisdom with us have made this document the creative, comprehensive, and forward-looking plan it is. New Canaan is a special place, and this broad and deep level of positive community engagement is the reason. It is a privilege to serve the people of New Canaan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, and I would also like to thank all the commissioners for the patience and taking the time tonight to go through all these last final comments and um, um, changes and modifications, I think it's worthwhile to, you know, just make sure we're crossing every T and dotting every I when, when going through this. It was time well spent, I'm sorry we kept you extra long tonight, but I think we got a lot done, and it's a great document that we've produced, so.
It's early, we normally go to midnight.
Normally, yeah, we're going home early.
Sure, you can stay here longer if you'd like.
Yeah, thank you, everyone, meeting adjourned.
Dan?
On my uh.
Yes, of course.